Okay, the live is started.
Are we ready to go? Welcome, everyone, to the January COBAC meeting. I'm so excited that we are here and joining and have a really exciting agenda. So I'll turn it over to John with no further ado.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. This is the meeting of the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee. January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. We'll start off with roll call. John Healan, Chair.
Carl Burnett, Co-Chair.
Nicholas Raiden.
Amanda Hamer, Member.
Erin Rivers, Member.
Ashley Schaefer, Member.
Whitney Bennett, Member.
Corey Sparks, Member. Oh, sorry.
Don't be. Barb Campbell, Ben City Council. Sorry, Corey.
Excellent. We'll continue. If that's everybody, we'll continue with the land acknowledgement, read by Carl.
Okay, we would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of the Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribe ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen-fifty-five while retaining regular and customary hunting, hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wana Llama, Warm Springs, Wasco, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Great. Onto agenda, item number three, approval of the alternate meeting date of November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three minutes. Are any comments?
What's the alternate meeting date business?
It's because it wasn't on the fourth.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
A little early in the month.
Yeah.
All right, I motioned to approve the minutes from November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, or twenty-twenty-two.
That's John.
Nick Raiden, I second.
All in favor?
I.
All right, as unanimously it looks like. All right, we have some time for a public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? Online or in person?
Hello, Charlene. Would you like to say something?
Charlene? Hi, I'm Charlene Wills. I've been a guest at your meetings before. I actually intended to be there last month and I didn't make it, but I'm glad to be here today. Thank you for having me.
Glad to hear.
Awesome. All right, now to introduce the new Accessibility and Equity Manager.
Well, good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to formally introduce our new Accessibility and Equity Manager, Cassandra Kehoe. For those of you who I have not had a chance to meet before, I'm Stephanie Betteridge. I'm the city's Chief Innovation Officer and one of our Assistant City Managers. So I, like many of you, are absolutely thrilled to have Cassandra leading our accessibility program and joining the Equity Department. Cassandra brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the accessibility role in addition to her absolute passion for public service. So I am just excited to see what lies ahead and have no doubt that Cassandra's leadership will meet the needs and expectations of our community. I believe Cassandra's had a chance to meet with all of you already, so I won't do a big formal introduction, but did want to provide an opportunity in case Cassandra wants to share anything with the committee or with the public who might be watching.
Absolutely. Thank you, Stephanie, for that really kind introduction. I'm so thrilled to be working with COBAC and with the City of Bend. I think that the advisory committee is, as I've learned from meeting with each of you, really passionate about the work that you do, that you impact the city of Bend and you make it more accessible for everyone. I'm really, really pleased to be here to be able to be part of that. And I think that looking at your strategic plan, I'm thrilled to partner and figure out how you can put it into action and make it a strategic action and do so much good work. So it's a pleasure to be here and I'm really excited to join the city. Thank you, Stephanie.
Excellent. Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Welcome to your first official COBAC meeting.
Onto agenda item number six, website improvement, accessibility update.
Thank you all for having us here today. Yeah, for those of you who have not met, my name is Jacob Riegel. I'm a user experience designer here at the city. Joined by Heather Hill here, the project manager, who's helped to keep me on track with this pretty good project that we're going to share. And just as kind of like a little bit of background or reminder, as part of council's accessible and effective city government tool, we have been tasked with using a human-centered design approach to improve the city's website. So human-centered design is, according to Don Norman, the author of The Design of Everyday Things, an approach that puts human needs, capabilities, and behavior first, and then designs to accommodate those needs. If you got my mask, this would be a lot easier. Clear. Let's see. So in the past year, we hired SiteCrafting to help us perform some user research to really determine more concretely what we need to do to improve the site. So moving on, we'll take a look at the research findings. Their work. So with SiteCrafting's help, we conducted some user research, starting off with four stakeholder workshops, including one with an accessibility focus. So we had Lisa here participated, Sharisa, as well as some other city members, like Zavi Borha, representing the underrepresented populations and some other staff members as well. Next, SiteCrafting took a look at our Google Analytics for the city's website, as well as like key, like search terms that people are in the community using to find content on our site. They installed an onsite feedback collector. So you might have noticed maybe in the last six months, if you go to the city's website, we now have this little pop-up at the bottom that says, was this page helpful? Yes or no? If not, people in the community can say, you know, a little bit more about that. So we got a lot of great helpful feedback through that as well. And then we put out a community survey as well, asking more kind of high-level questions like, what's, what isn't meeting your needs with the city website? Like, what frustrations are you having? What are things that you that are helpful on the city website? So with all of that, next one, from all of the, all of that research, we, or SiteCrafting, put together a list of fifteen top tasks that they found, you know, so through those workshops and the analytics and feedback and community survey, what are the top tasks that people are trying to perform on the city website? What's the information that people are looking for? What are the services that they're looking for as well on the website? So for example, so this is that list here, you know, paying utility bills, filing a police report, or like applying for a building permit. So with that, they took those tasks and conducted some navigation testing, so called like tree testing. So participants who helped out with this testing, they were given those fifteen tasks, and they took a look at our current navigation structure and asked the community to walk through that navigation to see if they can find, locate the proper page to perform a particular service or task or whatever. So they looked at our current navigation and then with, you know, the results of that based off, and as well as some of the other data that they got from the initial research, they came up with a new navigation structure. They tested that out as well and then and looked out, looked at where that, where there was improvements and where there was still some tweaking, some tweaks that needed to be made. So they made those changes and came up with a version two navigation, which would, which performed much better within the community, and that's what we, what we're going to end up implementing. So that's one piece of this, this project. We're going to change the overall navigation structure so that it makes more sense for the community. But then kind of like jumping back a little bit, looking at some of the findings overall. Some kind of specific things, community members reported some confusion around permitting process. There's a lot of questions around parking, paying utility bills, a lot of things that like we've kind of seen before, but it was echoed in this research. And then overall, the, the, the search functionality could be improved. So that's something we really want to take a look at and see how, how we can improve that. What are, what are some of the things that we can do? Like either implementing a new search tool, and there's other things we can do, like carrying down the number of pages we have, making the pages perform better. If we have less content on the pages, or like the pages are structured better. So this is some things that we, that we're going to focus on there too. And then in general, yeah, just the website is hard to navigate and find information. So as I mentioned, we'll implement a new top-level navigation structure. But then on the page-by-page basis, we got back from SiteCrafting some proposed page templates. So trying to take a look at like, once people get to the pages, we want to make sure that that content is easy to find on the page. So we want to, we want people to get to the pages easily. And then, once they're on the pages, they can actually find the services and information that they're looking for, once they're there. Here's some, you know, some specific feedback that we got, again, echoing a lot of sentiments that was shared earlier. It's very difficult to find things. People end up calling because they can't find the information on the site. So we want to, we want to help city staff as well and make it easier for the community to find the information so that they don't have to call staff. We, at the same time, we do want to make it easy, if they do want to call, to like find the right number to call to. So, you know, multiple ways. Again, and some people just want to call, but we want to at least, the people who don't want to call, we want them to be able to find the site. Though detailed information about projects, for example, is buried deep within the site. We, yeah, so again, improving the site navigation can address this as well as cleaning up the number of pages that we have. Yeah, the code section is cumbersome. We can't change how code is written, but we can, on the pages that have, that talk about city codes, so for example, like snow removal and like the community's responsibility, we can write, we can write some of the code language in a way that makes more sense to the community and then link to particular code sections rather than just copying and pasting code language, which most people don't understand. I don't necessarily understand. So there's some high-level things. Moving on to record some other recommendations that the, that SiteCrafting has made. Number one, create a solid web governance and content plan. So with SiteCrafting's help, we have identified a lot of things that we want to change on the website and we plan to change. We want to make sure that after we make these changes and moving on kind of perpetuated, in perpetuity into the future, we have a good system in place so that as we continue to add content to the website, add new pages, we're doing it in a way that makes sense and still like adheres to the accessibility standards and stuff that we've, that we're trying to bake into this web governance policy, in particular, and just usability standards. So you want to keep the website looking good after we make changes. Next, they suggest moving to a new content management system. So this is basically redesigning the website on a new platform. That's not something we, we plan on doing as part of this project, but it is good to know and it's been identified and we can work towards that. There are a lot of recommendations that have come out of this report that we will, that we do plan on implementing that can move us in that direction too and make it easier in the future when we are finally ready to move to a new platform, that it won't be as big of a lift, as big of a lift as it would be today. And then a new content management system would, would be helpful for internal staff and making content easier. But again, that's a, that's a future project. Last recommendation here was to hire a full-time employee to handle the website. We've kind of moved in that direction. We recently hired a graphic designer. Prior to that, my role was split between the website and our graphics program. So with that new graphic designer onboard, they can, they're, they're taking off a lot of my graphics projects. So now I can focus more solely on the website and address a lot of these issues and stuff that have come up here. So kind of moving back to, so the information architecture, so this is basically just how content is structured on our site, so the page structure. Taking a look at, from a high level, the top navigation. So what was, what came out of that? Those, the tree testing and the navigation testing. This is, this is what we're kind of looking at moving towards. It's not a huge departure from our current menu structure, but there are some things that are moved kind of further up and, and it's been pared down a little bit. So for example, services will remain, and I think that's really important. Government, news, and events will be now part of kind of like the main navigation and then this help and directory. So as, as we've seen from a lot of the feedback, people want to know like who to contact. We want to make it easier for people to, to find, you know, contact information and have like a clearer directory as, as well as some help topics and FAQs and stuff so that they can easily get, get to those at the same time. And then lastly, this, this will be brand new, this I want to section. So this will just provide another way for people to navigate the content, so just based off of kind of different action items. I want to, you're apply, contact file, and each one of these will be a page that will include, you know, different things that you can pay for on the website, you know, pay utility bills, pay a parking ticket, for example. So the goal is kind of creating buckets of content and being able to help bring people down into those buckets and make it easier for them to just find, find the content that they need. That's, that's it. We did provide the full report if you want to look through that.
Pretty dense.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any, anything else coming out of this that specifically about accessibility of the website?
So one thing I think that we want to address, and I think just at a high level, we want to make sure that that's just baked into everything. Usability, like accessibility and usability, like really go hand in hand. If we're addressing accessibility requirements, requirements like following WCAG, you know, two-point-one or two-point-two, we want to make sure that content on a page, on a page-by-page level makes sense and is structured properly using the proper heading structure and stuff like that. So I think a lot of this from the report, a lot of that usability stuff is, it addresses the accessibility issues. As long as we have, you know, the proper templates built, or the templates built out properly, properly so that they include, again, like those proper heading structures, make sure, and I think talking about the web governance policy and stuff too, making sure that all the web editors know that when we add images, they all have alt text. So, yeah, so a lot, a lot of that stuff was, I think, just baked into the report as a whole.
That, that makes sense. Sorry, again, this is Carl Burnett. Do you know whether SiteCrafting specifically did any testing using screen readers?
I don't believe so.
That's something that we might want to consider, I think. Because it's one thing to say this should be accessible based on the fact that we built it according to these standards, but it's another thing to say somebody actually using the adaptive technology has tested and made sure that it works.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and I think that's a really great point. We do, we have, in the past year, I believe, we got access to a screen reader technology, and it is what my, my hope that now that I have, can focus more, you know, solely on the website, that like I do have that NVDA screen reader software on my computer, so I can run through it. But I, I think somebody who has to use a screen reader, it would be helpful for them to walk through it because I'm a sighted person. I can, you know, even if I use a screen reader, it's, I can easily overlook stuff that somebody who has to use a screen reader is going to catch.
Is that something where COBAC would be helpful that for COBAC to help, help you find somebody to do, do that testing? Or is there any role that we could play there?
I would love that, yeah. Yeah, so kind of like the next steps right now, we're, we're going to put together a roadmap for like how we're going to roll out, you know, some of these changes. It would be helpful, like as we kind of determine, first off, like which pages should stay and which pages should go. We're, we're looking at rewriting the content. I think at that point, like it would be really helpful to, as we start building out some of those page templates to have somebody within, actually go through it with a screen reader.
It looks like Barb has her hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. One thing I've heard in the past about screen readers is they, that they're just no good for graphs and charts. Just a comment, if you've been considering that. Thank you.
If we were able to get volunteers for you to test out the website or screen readers and such, should we contact, have people contact you directly, or is there a web form you want to direct them to, or?
At this point, yeah, I think the best way would be to just contact me directly.
Okay.
I, I would personally really advise against using random people that use screen readers, which is, you know, great, but also at the same time, there's people that consult on this stuff and it goes much further than screen readers. I think as the city, you know, it, it, it's a big entity. It should go about this properly and really dive deeper into accessibility. Yeah, and have people, professionals who are paid to do this kind of stuff so that they don't miss anything. I think it's really important to, to actually go for those resources because they are available.
Thanks for that, Ashley. I agree.
I don't think volunteers are the way to go for that, yeah. I think, yeah, Ashley.
If I could supplement too, with Jacob, we had the benefit of being able to kind of look at some of what, what's coming up. And I thought, when you're looking at WCAG specifically, like the perceivability, everything with it being operate, operational and understandable, I thought that there is really exciting promise with it specifically because of the high contrast, the space, the spaciousness of everything. So I'm, it's an exciting, it's an exciting project and also the great comments, Ashley, with being able to have it. It's, it's, it's great.
And I might add with maps, people with low vision and things, you know, the contract, color contrast, of course, but a lot of times, the, the directions are, they cover the actual street names and things like that when you, when you see them. And also the color contrast is a big issue with, with all of the maps. Especially for low vision as well as low vision as well as color blindness. So when you guys looked at each other and laughed.
I mean, it's definitely something.
But I mean, it's a work in progress.
I think they're very difficult.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, a lot of people just don't know when they're, you know, creating their maps that that's, that's, you know, it's starting, you know, to train people.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm partially colorblind myself. So I know with, yeah, particularly when you get into maps with like a lot of different layers on them and you're trying to show like all the different zoning areas, it just doesn't make any sense to me sometimes. Like some of them, like you had, it's really difficult to see the difference between one shade and another, so.
I think that goes into some other conversations too about, you know, training that's provided for people who, you know, need to include accessibility in the work they do for the city. You know, I think that's something we kind of prioritized a little bit and a bit ago. But can we take down the screen share? It's taking up the whole screen for me.
Cassandra and I have talked also about getting, you know, training, somebody get, getting training on the NVDA in, you know, the city staff. So I feel that that's important because it's, it's huge. It's, there's, because there, you go into Braille and all that other thing, you know, all the other things that, you know, there's a list of that you can listen to on that, so.
Okay, I have a question real quick. Does your scope include the, the online permit portal, or is that a separate entity?
That's a separate entity.
Okay.
Yeah, we can help make everything easier. Get to the permit.
Okay.
And I think even just like training documents, I think. One thing that we can hopefully focus on is like making it easier to find the, the how-tos and even putting together, it's easier to follow how-tos for the permit center.
Okay.
One more little thing for website, because I was recently on there and I was trying to find the accessibility, like resource page through the COBAC site and it didn't link to that, but it did it in the reverse when you go to the accessibility resource page. But yeah, I thought it would be useful to have, have those both linked.
Needs to be updated because it's still under legal and it's not under legal anymore. It's the whole, that whole page actually needs to be revamped.
Yeah.
It's like all the other pages.
This is Amanda. Ashley, I wonder if you have, or where do we take from here, like the idea of having consultants come in, like professional consultants come in, like who does that in the community? Do we know?
Um, I don't know of anyone specifically in our community, but there is a lot of, a lot of companies online. There could be someone in town that I just don't know, and we can try and search local. But there are a lot of, a lot of groups out there that are specifically focused on doing website accessibility.
Yeah, and I would add that I think as part of this, I, all of the feedback is really great and helpful. We really appreciate it. We're at a point where we, we've gotten all the information from the consultants and now as like staff, we're trying to figure out, okay, what are our next steps? So we're trying to kind of gain information from everyone. And we'll start to look into other consultants or, you know, does anything else we need to do to kind of prioritize what like the next steps are? So that's going to be a conversation we're having within the next few weeks to kind of start being like, okay, like what are each of our milestones to get to like the end goal of really improving the website? So I really appreciate that and it's something that I think we can look into seeing other like screen reader, any consultants in the area that can help us with that. And I'll also follow up with SiteCrafting too, to just find out more about maybe what they did use as part of their tree testing. Because they were aware that we did have a high emphasis on accessibility as part of, just like, that was something that was really important to us. So I can certainly follow up with them just to kind of confirm what they did.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, we appreciate all of your, I mean, all your work, hard work, long work, you know, and still to come. So we appreciate you guys so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you. And again, yeah, feel free to point people in my direction. Or if you guys all, if any of you have any questions.
Great.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay. We'll go on to item number seven, CFEC Parking Discussion. So would you like to lead this discussion? would you like to lead this discussion or?
I'm happy just to kind of kick it off.
Yeah.
I so everyone on COBAC should have received an email from me this morning, just kind of outlining some of the city council conversations, the public comments that were made from the meeting on, what was it, January seventeenth? Is that when it was? Anyways, the last the last opportunity to do that, we wanted to have a opportunity for some robust conversation within COBAC. And John and Carl, I don't know if you feel like sharing with the group just generally your sentiments, your thoughts. We could open it up. I know Nick has some input potentially in regard to this. And then perhaps if Counselor Campbell feels that you'd like to join in or or give some rationale for your vote. It'd be great just to open that up for for reflection, discussion, and then also just if there's anything pending that we'd like to maybe to invite city staff going forward at a different time.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so at our November meeting, we talked about the removal of parking requirements in the city of Bend. It seemed to be that the conversation that we had was that most people kind of agreed that parking requirements, if they were to go away, that we'd like to mention that there would be ADA spots potentially included in future developments. We don't know what that looks like when they remove the parking requirements. And there's a question about what that might look like and what the city can and cannot enforce. We didn't have a meeting in December. Our next meeting was today, which is January twenty sixth. I got an email the day of the parking requirement discussion from a city councillor who was wondering if COBAC would like to come and make an opinion on the parking requirements. I met up with Carl. We talked about what we thought about talking about for the parking requirements and we said, you know, basically I'll go there and say, you know, we basically what we talked about in November as far as you know, parking requirements would be good to be removed, but we should keep ADA requirements in mind for that. And then I I went ahead that day of because I, you know, it was short notice. And I stood up and said I was the chair of COBAC and gave my support for the removal of parking requirements. And this I found out is a big no-no because we didn't actually vote on it in November. So I kind of put my foot in my mouth, but yeah, so that's that's why we're having this conversation.
Appreciate that, John, especially as we, you know, co we we figure things out in terms of conversation. And we really just want to make sure that each COBAC member has an opportunity to weigh in. And if there's any dissent that that's noted going forward, it's just something to have. So I appreciate revisiting this greatly. And if anyone has any comment, I don't know if anyone online would like to chime in. Barb, if you're interested at all.
Is that a no?
Okay. Just I'm just curious, what was the is there, has the city council, is there language that's specific that's been adopted?
Yeah, so it's in that email and that's something certainly I reckon it being very late before previously to to receiving the information. So it's, you know, available to you. You can review it. I've linked the specific time timestamps of when city council addresses it, the presentation from staff and then the robust debate within city council members and then also the public comment section. So that's available. And I think it gives a very great overview because it is a complicated subject matter that I would do a disservice to give you a summary of it here, but yeah, and and at any point, if there's any additional comments you want to make, I'm I'm happy to share it. You could send them to me and I could share them with John or Carl or whatever we'd like to do, but.
Okay, yeah, as far as I did get an email from a councillor after the meeting. And what they said was they wanted me to bring this up at the next COBAC meeting regarding parking requirements. And if that's okay, I'll go ahead and read the short paragraph that they said. Would the committee prefer to leave the citing of accessible spots to the whims of developers, randomness of lot sizes and geographical location of a parcel in the city? Or would the committee prefer the city to use our right of way and accessibility program to ensure that accessible spots are cited in a way that addresses gaps as they may arise due to the more dense development or in areas where developers have chosen to build zero parking? And that doesn't need to be feedback that we, you know, feedback on that that we have to deliver today, but it's something to consider whereas if parking requirements or because parking requirements have been removed, should the city use its ability to does forcefully designate ADA spots in places that aren't planning on having parking? Or do we just let it all go?
Um, this is Corey. I have a quick question. Can you tell us which councillor sent that to you?
That was councillor Brodmann.
Okay, I see. Okay.
Councillor Perkins that asked me to speak for COBAC that day.
Ashley?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think I feel like it goes without saying for COBAC that like we think there should be designated accessible spots. I think this has been an issue that there's a lack of them. And so just say like, yeah, I I really think there needs to be and there needs to be thoughtful thoughtful placement of them not on busy streets and things. So I, yeah, I'm hoping everyone's in agreement with that.
This is Carl. I'm actually I'm so confused about this issue. I need to read up a little bit, but are we talking about off-street parking here?
Um, I believe for the parking requirements, it is about off-street parking, but I am guessing and Barb could probably speak more to this. The city would be able to do on-street parking designated ADA spots if we needed to.
Whitney?
Yeah, I guess, let me put my hand down. A little bit just kind of I'm looking for clarification. Also, hundred percent agree with Ashley that that we need more and they need to be put in safe places, but that I stand behind like they need to be put like it. I think it should be the responsibility of well, let's say, I don't know where it should be the responsibility of, but close to the use that the parking spot is intended for. Right? So not just pooling, we need X amount of ADA parking spots. We'll put them all over here, but in front of that use where that new development is going, that's what I'd like to see. So whatever one of those two arguments that have been put forth by the put forth by the 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 statement that you said before, I think we could stand behind as long as those consciously are put in a place that is close to the use versus pooled. If that makes sense, because I think in general, parking can be very complicated in 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 terms of designating location.
Okay, Barb?
As of now, there are no requirements to build ADA parking. Um, that's the vote that happened on the seventeenth. Prior to that, we had had, I think, a work session. And we thought that we would require an ADA van space, which I think everybody knows really looks like two regular parking places. We so in the work session, we said that any building which is required to be accessible. So that essentially is any commercial building. Commercial buildings are built with you know, again, all of those accessible requirements. So we had gone into the meeting thinking that commercial buildings were still going to require at least one accessible space. Council at our at the meeting when we voted on this took out that requirement. And we have no plan or program to manage on um, right now. So council, the argument was that they they just, they think it's just too random to say you have to have an accessible space for every commercial building, for every building that includes accessible features. They thought that was too random. And so it's just not there. All of council discussed that they think we need to do, we need, we do need to manage the right of way. They think that right of way parking is the better place because they imagine that someone um, is going to pull up to the curb and then be able to get out from that car directly onto the sidewalk. And that if they're now directly onto the sidewalk, they might actually be closer to the door they're trying to get through than if they were on the parking spot. So again, as of right now, there are no requirements for ADA parking unless the developer chooses to put in parking. If a developer chooses to put in parking, then they must put in at least one ADA space.
Okay, Ashley?
Um, that's a bummer that that was the assumption made. First of all, it's pretty ableist. You know, assuming that the the passenger is going to be the person getting out. If it's along the sidewalk, I I drive a car myself and use a wheelchair. I always have to get out on the street if it's straight parking, you know, van usage isn't always getting out on that side. And so someone with a ramp is going to pull that out into the street? No. And also just the fact that, you know, that seems random, but it's not random. Anywhere there's human use in design, we need to be included because we are also humans and we inhabit all of those spaces as well. People with disabilities exist everywhere. That's very frustrating to hear that that was the view on it, that it seemed random to include people with disabilities like no, it needs to be included everywhere. Oh, thank you for sharing that, Barb.
Ashley, I I did not use your specific name, but I absolutely was talking about you when I described someone who is able to drive and pull their own wheelchair out the driver's side, you know, where is that now? That is in the travel lane that someone is trying to get out of their, you know, absolutely, Ashley.
Yeah, and and also like getting out onto a curb with a wheelchair isn't the easiest. Like I'm very independent and have a lot of mobility and I hate getting out onto a curb. It makes the the transfer a lot harder. And even if it is, you know, the option. So there's just so it sounds like there's a lot of assumptions without actually talking to people that it's going to affect. And that's really not equitable. And so that's that's sad to hear.
Yeah, um, this is, sorry, Barb, go ahead.
Sorry, Corey. I think our own mayor, this might be in the newspaper, honestly. I think our mayor said that it it's, you know, in her opinion, the vast majority of folks with disabilities are being driven by someone else. And for, I'm sorry, Ashley, I know.
In Bend, that's absolutely not true.
I don't even know what to say to you. I just I'm sorry, you know. And then on the other hand, you know, this really is coming from the state. This is not something that the Bend City Council just made up that we're going to eliminate parking requirements. So I don't mean to put that kind of you know, I don't want to put that on our own city council. But I'll tell you, having served with you for so many years, it it ableist, yeah, exactly. Sorry, go ahead, Corey.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to quickly say that that's a like enormous concern, just the the like, we're assuming that this is what occurs, like that seems kind of like a huge like red flag in a conversation for the councillors to kind of accept that as, you know, what their assumption is. So that's, you know, that's pretty concerning to me, but Barb, I'm wondering really quick if you can tell me, I'm trying to look right now, but can you tell me the vote on that? Like who voted which way? That'd be great.
Sure, it was five to two with me voting against it because I and for me, it's transit first. I just, you know, my argument more than anything is cart before the horse until people have alternatives just tormenting them with no parking is just tormenting people. So I was a no. The other person that was a no is Anthony. And he's a no because there was still something in there about requiring some parking someplace. He was a no because he is just full stop, no parking anywhere is my understanding. I still was a little confused on his no vote, but it was definitely not the same as mine.
I'm still trying to gain understanding here about so if if a developer chose not to build parking for their development, can someone give me the arguments in favor of requiring accessible parking to be built when other parking is not required to be built?
Maybe that could be posed to somebody that we that that will ask and they can answer your question.
Well, I I think there's other members of the committee who who maybe hold that view that it should be, and I'm just trying to understand the arguments.
Why?
ADA law doesn't necessarily stipulate if you don't if when you provide parking, you have to provide it a minimum.
Sure.
And so there's that threshold. I'm not quite sure, you know, now that we're eliminating that threshold, what does that mean? So.
This is Amanda. I wonder if is, are there county, state, federal laws, like, you know, ADA that that are, that provide those requirements or those, you know, the outline for commercial buildings or developments?
Yeah, for every use, there's a a minimum amount of parking that's required.
But no, there's no speaking to whether or not that a percentage of that has to be ADA.
Yes, there's.
That's the literally the ADA.
Yeah, state of Oregon, state of Oregon has statutes that that they refer back to ICCA one one seven and also ADA. And there's some laws there that if you do provide, say, a hundred stalls, a certain percentage of those are required to be ADA. Whether it be van accessible or or just a regular like six foot wide accessible aisle.
But if you're not providing any, then you don't have to provide any at all.
Yeah, if you're not providing parking for anyone.
You're not providing parking for anyone.
That's exactly right. And if they provide any parking whatsoever, there must be one van accessible space. And then that one goes up to twenty five regular parking spaces. After twenty five, you've now got to have a second van accessible. And from that point, I'm not sure if it's one for twenty five. But twenty five is the number where you get more than one. If they choose to build any, and you're exactly right. If they build none, none is no ADA is required.
And that's what the vote was about, right? And that situation where they build none should bend require them to build an accessible parking space anyway, but I'm, even though I obviously am the user of accessible parking myself, I'm having trouble understanding the arguments favor of requiring that.
Corey and then Whitney?
Um, I think Whitney actually said your hand up first. You 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 want, you can go, Corey. Okay, I'll okay, um, I guess a kind of clarification, just in reversing what we were just explaining. If they require parking, then an ADA spot is required. Flip it, no parking required. There's not a law, a state law that says they have to build an ADA parking, include an ADA parking spot, but what's under vote is they can create that for our jurisdiction. And then and saying that, well, we were gonna, we're we we're gonna say that you required to add in a certain amount of ADA parking, even though there's no regular parking, and that's a law. And even though you put that ADA, it doesn't also trigger the opposite. Now you have to put in ten other spots. It's just going to focus on that ADA. And that's kind of the argument, I think, from where it's coming from is it's we're okay with there not being the other parking spots, but it, we do need an ADA. It, we do need an ADA spot so that, so that we're creating accessible development. Uh, so I think just that clarification of it's not the flip. And I think that might help that understanding that argument, maybe that. Why we want ADA part, an ADA, a few ADA parking spots and require them so that they, these new developments stay accessible, redevelopment stays accessible. Right? So, thanks.
Ashley?
Hey Cory, did you wanna go? Still?
Uh, I guess I just have like some, like more clarifying questions. Um, it feels like this, uh, has, has different implications for the types of development. So if it's like an apartment complex versus if it's a commercial, like a, like a strip mall, I guess. Um, where like, I, I would imagine that for like a commercial area and there's. Probably like the, like a parking structure or something like the assumption of that. Um, I think that that's kind of how it used to be, um, anyway, before, you know, very recently, I guess, with these votes, but. Um, yeah, that, it just. If, if this is like all, if all of that is under one umbrella of conversation, it's kind of hard for me to like. Think about what all those implications are. Does that make sense?
I think we're really only talking about this special case of a, this is Carl, I'm sorry. Um, of, of a developer who chooses not to build any parking. And.
Right.
Yeah.
I just mean like, what are they developing? Are they develop, like, is this a, a commercial development? Or if it's like housing or mixed use or whatever, that's kind of my question for that, for clarification there.
Yeah, and I think all that stuff needs to be considered in it too. Like, I, I just think the issue needs to be addressed. Um, you know, if we're going towards making things more walkable and having less cars and things. Accessibility really needs to be addressed because that, that's pretty, you know, excluding. Um, you know, it's great if more people are biking, but some people don't have the option. And so what do we do to mitigate that, to make sure that people are included? Um, and that it is equitable, uh, you know, and, and maybe that is the, the city kind of coming up with a plan. To have a certain amount of ADA spaces on the street or, or in some fashion, you know, like the way they have it downtown where it's like the diagonal spots. You know, those are great, and they work, um, and that's technically street parking, right? Um, and so like, stuff like that, like we need, there needs to be a plan. And so I think just, um, using that excuse that like, we're trying to make things more walkable. And like letting people out of considering accessibility. Uh, that easily is like a major oversight really, and I think we need to at least. Make sure that the conversation is had and that there's emphasis put on, um, making sure that these things stay equi-. Or not stay, but are equitable and become equitable, um, and we don't let them out of it. So I guess, does that satisfy a little bit of an answer, Carl?
Hmm, thanks Ash. It does help. I'm just still, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out my own opinion on this, to be honest. Um, because of course I'm, um, trying to support accessibility, but I also don't want to. Um, I don't want, um, accessibility to be something that hinders goals of making. A car-free community. And that, like, it, it, it sits a bit the wrong way for me if I think about. We're building this building, uh, to be car-free, oh, except for people with disabilities. They, they can be, they can, they, they, they still have to drive, right? That's kind of how I'm thinking about it, um, but I'm still coming up with my opinion on this.
But I, I think that's kind of a reality though, right? Like, that's what, you know, like pilot view, you can drive up it. You know, when you need to, because it, it's not accessible unless you, you drive for wheelchair users kind of thing and like. Um, you know, otherwise people might not be able to make it to those places, um, and don't have the option of biking or something. Um, and so I think there needs to be some solution for, for everyone to be considered. Um, even if we are going towards more bikes.
Ashley, and just to interject, I think again, if we revisit that email I sent the link. There is a really thoughtful presentation by staff members, um, that have extreme knowledge about exactly what's happening. And one of them happens to be here with us now, who is kind enough to come down to field some questions if there are. Or Russ, if you wanted to just give us an overview of, we're speaking specifically to CPEC and, and the elimination of parking.
And the parking, yeah. So, good afternoon, everyone. I don't, I didn't think I met everybody, so I'm Russ Grace, I'm the Chief Operations Officer for the city. So overseeing community development, economic development, housing, transportation utilities and fleet. So, um, I can give, do you want me to give a little bit of background? Stephanie just asked me to pop down because this topic was going on. I can write, write some context of what's going on. I just wanna make sure I'm addressing the question, you know, the concerns of the committee.
Context would be helpful, yes, thank you.
So, I'll, I'll just kind of start at the high level. So last year, this, the, the Department of Land Conservation, um, at the state level. Worked, uh, under the guise of a governor's executive order around climate to revise some land use policies. Under the context of trying to address the climate issue, um, and reduce greenhouse gases. A very extensive rulemaking process that took about a year to develop. It was very fast-tracked by the state level. It was an administrative process. And the best way to sum it up is it's, it was the most, um, extensive overhaul of the Oregon land use system. Since it was really put into place back in the seventies and eighties. Um, so it's, it's a quite a substantial difference in rulemaking. And in that, there are requirements around. Trying to reduce the reliance on the automobile, trying to densify in certain areas of town, which are kind of designated as climate-friendly areas. And there's a long list of requirements and kind of mandates that cities need to do around that. So we've been spending the past year trying to digest that process as it's been going through really fast. Um, we've been, we've been able to get in there and, and kind of help direct some of the policy guidance around how the document rules were made. Because there were some issues that we were having. But the rules were, uh, finally, um, approved in October of last year. They're in effect now. There's a couple lawsuits in play around that. It, um, a consortium of eight cities, Oregon cities, put a lawsuit in, uh, late last year. Challenging the validity of the rules and also around, they went, requesting a stay of the rules, why the legal process figured a way out. On the heels of that, another lawsuit came in from the, the, the Realtors Association, the Builders Association, Trucking. And some other kind of, um, private organizations also challenging the rules. The stay was denied, um, at the state level. They're trying to fast-track now the, the hearing of the actual suit. Um, so we're tracking that as well, but one of the first things that required us to do was to address parking. And there are three initiatives that needed to happen over the next, over the first six months of twenty twenty-three. We really started out with a strategic strike around shelters and some other smaller things about removing parking minimums there. You need some EV structures in place, but really when we got to June of this year. There were basically, and I don't have all the details, but I'm gonna just speak at a high level. Options that were outlined to cities. One was they can either just outright remove all parking minimums from their code. Or they would have to do some extensive programmatic work around parking. Do parking inventories, establish paid parking for a certain percentage of your parking inventory around the city. Um, and so we went to council, uh, back in November, I believe. And presented, here's what's going on. We can do this one at a time. Or council had already expressed interest of removing, removing parking minimums earlier last year. And we said, please hold on that discussion until we can have this entire rule process figured out, because we know there's parking involved. We don't wanna tinker with the code twice if we don't have to.
Hmm.
So we went back and had that policy discussion at a work session with council and say, we can do this one at a time. Or if you'd like us just to go, you know, skip to the end question of what do we need to have in place by the end of June of this year. We can do that, and here are the options. Council directed us to move forward with removing parking minimum option, which we did, brought that code in. Um, had the first open up a public hearing and then the, the, the stay dropped, we continued, we kind of held until we figured out what was going on with the lawsuits. Since the stay was, um, denied, we brought it back to council in January. They heard it, um, and moved forward with removing parking minimums with some other additional. Kind of high-level requirements around, you know, trying to address accessible parking for certain developments. So that's kind of the, the context of how we got here and kind of the policy direction we received from council. Um, and I think I, I, I can let Counselor Campbell speak on behalf of council, but. Staff wanted to, you know, we were bringing up the issues too around making sure that accessibility was addressed, accessible parking was addressed, how do we wanna handle that? And in, in, in different areas of town, you're gonna handle it differently, um, in terms of development. So we were trying to get some direction from council and there was some code language that got dropped in around accessible parking for new developments of a certain size and shape. In certain areas.
Barb?
Uh, Russ, could you talk to us about, um, managing the right of way? And adding ADA spots onto the right of way? Um, I got the impression that that is, it's just not an easy thing. We couldn't just go back into one particular block and say, we need a spot in this block, let's put it in this, you know, place. Please.
Definitely can do that. So there's, I, I kind of break it into two big buckets. One is where, where is the city or large developments? Where are we building new infrastructure? Right? Because then you can have one conversation around, well, we're gonna build something, what are we building and what standard are we building to? And then you have all the existing neighborhoods and, and how do we just manage the existing streets? So right now, we do have a parking division within the city. It's a, it's a staff of one. We're hoping it's gonna go to a staff of two, mainly focused on downtown parking, the parking districts enforcement, things like that. We only have a couple parking districts around. So when we get requests, and we've gotten one recently around, you know, um, I, I have accessible, accessibility issues. Can you put an on-street, um, ADA space in front of my house or whatever that is? We're actually kind of working through that situation now because we do not have a program or policy to. How, how do we view those? How do, you know, what criteria do we use to assess it? Because anytime we put in a sign and striping, then we need to maintain it, and we have very limited maintenance options. So one of the things, like, one of our first questions back will be around, oh, can you please explain the situation? Where are you? Do you have off-street parking? Do you have off-street accessible parking? Like, if you're, if you're in a single-family house and you have a driveway and a garage, we may view that much differently than. The only place I can park is on the street, on a public street. And so we're trying to just, you know, evaluate. What's the best and highest use of parking on all the different areas of town within, um, on public streets? And how do we want that to be used? We, right now, we don't have policies or programs, so that's one of the things we're probably gonna be looking at is. Well, how do we wanna make these decisions within the right, right of way? And, and what kind of filters and lenses do we wanna use in that criteria?
Thank you. Um, and then two more. So in the example you gave, which is what we do right now. Somebody can write to the city and say, the only parking I have is on the street. Please put ADA in front of my apartment. Um, in that situation, if it happens, that person, any person with a tag. Can use that ADA spot. It's not then reserved for the person who requested it. Isn't that true?
Correct, it's within the public right of way. I can tell you, I'm only aware of one. Spot across the city outside of downtown that has an accessible, dedicated accessible space. Um, and that's out of Discovery Park Northwest Crossing, along the Discovery Park Road. Because there's no defined parking and the park district wanted to put in an accessible space for that park. And so we've actually filled to the, the standards, um, that's the, just so for context, that's the only one I can think of. There might be others, but that's the only one I can think of, but it's in public right of way in the city right now, outside of kind of the more denser areas.
Okay, and then just a little more specifically, Russ, on, you know, so what would it take for us? To put that program in place, start analyzing the right of way? You know, when do you imagine we might be ready to start that?
That, that's kind of, I can almost say that's in the conversations we're having with, with council around council goals. We don't have, currently, we don't have staffing to run that program. The staff that we have dedicated to parking is, is, they're already over, overburdened with just trying to manage our existing parking districts and enforcement. So we have, we're having conversations with council around a transportation fee or other revenue sources to bolster our transportation revenue. Because we're, right now, we're, we're just trying to survive providing the bare minimum maintenance services to the city. And there's, there's a lot of requests for additional programs and other things and capital to do, small improvements, large improvements. We'll be having conversations with council around that. But on the one that, that particular one I was just talking about, I actually need to follow up with Cassandra to help, help follow up with this particular individual, just to figure out what the situation is. And if it is a, an extremely unique circumstance, then we're, we'll figure out what potential options are. But we're, we're a little cautious of just opening it up and saying, yep, all you gotta do is request and the city's gonna run out and put a sign in the ADA space. That we really need to kind of have criteria around that. Port, Portland has programs around this, but they've got very, they got a long list of criteria to, to take those, each one of those requests through.
Cory?
Um, yeah, thanks Russ for that, um, uh, like overview. That was helpful, um, especially for me. Like trying to think about distinguishing between different types of development and what the perfect parking implications are there. Um, but I also just wanted to like, um, echo things that Carl was saying and kind of like, you know, say I, I have a similar. Similarly conflicted feelings in some ways, like I definitely, definitely believe there should always be accessibility considered. And every, everywhere should be accessible. Um, but the parking conversation is like. If we're just talking about parking, it's totally out of context. Because, I mean, we all know that a very car-centric community is not accessible, period. Um, and that is, uh, whether or not there's parking kind of is specific to, to like a car-centric area. I mean, obviously, there are people who are gonna need cars, but the point of all this is not to make it so there's no cars. It's to make that, so that there's options, you know, more than just one, basically. Um, and then, you know, in combo with the fact that there is a major housing crisis. And a lot of people affected by that are disabled people and parking minimums are at least, you know, I would say probably a substantial. Part of like the barrier to development, especially of like, you know, multifamily housing. So it's really difficult to kind of like balance these things, considering like Barb said. It's kind of putting the horse before the cart, because there are people who need parking. And if we are also not, like, you know, people who, like, dis- disabled people who. Could potentially like take a bus instead of driving, there's no bus there. So it just cuts that out. So it does, in my mind, need to be a full community, like, change, which, you, you know, everything is so fragmented. But it's also, you know, not only disabled people need to drive, like, there are, uh, if you have a lot of kids. And you, or like you need to go far to get groceries or something, because there's no grocery store in your area. Or, you know, your school, the school is twenty, thirty minutes away from where you live. So these are kind of like the, the barriers of just generally accessible communities. Um, and so it just can be really difficult, uh, and to kind of square all of this. Um, so it's, that's, that's what I wanna say about why it's such a tough thing to, to arrive at. But I definitely think there should always be accessible spaces, like, because you can't just cut people off without at least providing other things. And, um, but still, I kind of can't get over the idea that council like assumes that this is the way that things are used. And therefore makes a decision on that basis. Um, they should not have to assume the way that disabled people interact with parking. They should ask. So, that's it.
I think you bring up some good points, so, because. It, it, it's kind of an deli-edged conundrum, right? You need the density to drive the need for transit and alternate forms of transportation. But we're not there yet, but you gotta plan for it. What do you, we, we've got a hundred and forty-five million dollars of the transportation improvements we're building over the next five years. So what do we build that to? It's, we, this, welcome to, you know, the, the daily life of a city transportation planner. And just trying to balance all those different competing needs, um, and I can guarantee you that this will be not the, this is not the last conversation that we will have on parking. Um, and we're gonna watch, and, and it is one of those things, because curb management is going to change over time. You know, how the, how transportation systems work is gonna change over time. And so we're gonna constantly monitor, and I, and I just want everyone to remember, we don't go from the situation we are today to this other dynamic. In a, in a week, right? There's gonna be a lot of runway that we're gonna see. We're gonna see the problems coming or the issues. There's gonna be policy discussions around them. Codes maybe need to be tweaked, parking regulations maybe, parking districts maybe come up. So this is gonna just be an evolving, ongoing conversation with the community, um, to try to answer some of the questions that you went at, because there's no. Find it today, about what the right, the right thing to do.
Um, could I, please, I'm sorry. Could we go, kind of go back all the way to where we started? What, and, and I wanna say, you know, there are, ev- no, there are no bad guys here. It's just incredibly difficult, you know, these are really tough decisions. Um, it, but, you know, we started with the fact that John had come to a city council meeting. With a recommendation from this committee. And the committee had not actually discussed that entire recommendation. So my question for you is, do you wanna in any way try to roll that back? So my question for you is, do you want to in any way try to roll that back? You know, in my opinion, it might be appropriate for John himself just to write a letter to council and say, you know, regarding the other, you know, his recommendation, you know, do you want to do something like that? That's my question for this discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I can write counsel and apologize and say that I wasn't actually representing COBAC. And then I would like to eventually have a recommendation from this committee regarding the parking minimums.
And I'm, I'm not asking you to apologize, John. Honest, I'm not. It's not an apology thing. But just an explaining, and yeah, if we could actually get a recommendation from the whole committee, that would be great.
Oh, uh, this is Nicholas Raiden. I'd like to have a motion to create a working session for COBAC to discuss successful parking and nuances of different types of development and how to provide accessible parking, uh, minimums for our community.
This is Carl. That would be outside of the regular COBAC monthly meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
I agree. Amanda, did you have something to ask Russ?
Oh, I was just wondering how we could be of help.
Well, I think.
As you guys go through this process, yeah.
And we're, we're, one thing I was going to mention is like, we're more than willing to bring our transportation planners and engineers to, because we're, we'll be having conversations around when we, like when we build a new street in the core area. That's, this is where the conversation with council went. We are planning to put on-street parking on. If we do that, then there is the question of how do we look at accessibility in a corridor type of environment instead of a building by building by building environment, knowing that in theory, we have parking minimums review, you know, removed. We still think developers are going to build parking. And if they do, then automatically for the building, so they have to put in whatever that, that required number of spaces is. But holistically for that area, how do we want to talk about it? So I do think that's an important conversation to have with council. And we, we more than willing to kind of have, we want to get the thoughts of this group as well to inform council, you know, as we start to design these projects, what we're designing to.
Great. Thank you. Uh, we're running low on time. Thanks for coming down. Um, we're going to go ahead and skip item number eight, uh, for the goal setting. We'll move that to the next meeting, uh, next month. We'll move on to item nine. Let's try and be quick. Uh, COBAC business, business, Carl's Winter Access Award nominations.
Great. Um, I think Cassandra is going to pull up some photos that I took. I, um, I've made a nomination for the Winter Access Award. It's for a building on Greenwood Avenue that houses Back Porch Coffee, uh, Blue Ice Burgers and Fries and Emerald City Smoothie. And during the um, multiple snow events that we had in December, the management of that building or whoever they have employed to maintain their property did a fantastic job of clearing their sidewalks all around the building throughout the storms. And it was really noticeable. And I've not yet been able to talk to anybody in the building's management. But I have that as a to-do item, um, because I guess we need a way of getting in touch with them in case we want to commend them. Oh, there, there, we've got the photos. Great. That's okay. Can you go to slide three there? Uh, yeah, there we go. So these are some, some shots I took of the cleared sidewalks. And then the next slide just has some, um, contrasting photos of, uh, adjacent sidewalks along Greenwood. Pretty bad shape, um, snow aside, but, um, the snow definitely makes it worse. That's it.
Can I just say, as someone who has a business that has a sidewalk that gets sun exposure and also not sun exposure, feel like it's kind of cheating getting sun exposure on your sidewalk, but I'm all for this award.
This building does have sidewalks all the way around it.
Oh, okay, good.
Some of it's in shade and some of it's in sun.
And is there next steps on?
Awarding?
Awarding.
Well, I'm supposed to figure out who we award it to, I think.
Yeah, it's the only one that's submitted something, but it's for what, two or two stories?
One commercial building that has three businesses in it.
So we'll give it probably to each, you know, whoever you voted for, but if you vote for that one, it's for all three. We'll go ahead and, you know, give a certificate for, um, for each of them.
Okay, great.
Is there a way to figure out who does the work? I'm sure the businesses know who decided to chip in and who didn't.
I had to do, uh, Ashley to try to figure that out. I, I'm sure that there's a, a property management company that really is the, is responsible for that, but.
Right now, my sidewalk doesn't have any snow. Yeah.
We haven't received anything.
I can't submit my own business. I shovel it. Um, so we move on to a stipend update.
Second update, you will no longer have to, in person, you will no longer have to sign the sheet for your lease. Um, I'll be handing you the sheet and you will receive your debit cards in the mail.
We've got about seven minutes left. Do we want to do COBAC roundtable? Events attended, fair information and an agenda setting? Um, well, I personally have made a, a, a point to try and attend as many committee meetings as possible. I'm a Ben to the Ben MPO, um, twice so far. Uh, Human Rights and Equity, um, a couple other different committees just to see how they're run and meet the people that are involved in them. Um, and it's, they're, they're always excited to see me. They don't really get guests. Um, anything else anyone's been doing?
This is Carl. Um, I attended a winter maintenance discussion that happened last week at Hawthorne Station. And there were representatives there from Coka as well. And there were people there from different agencies, the city, ODOT, and also the Parks and Rec Department. And I learned just what a patchwork it is, um, when you talk about keeping our streets and sidewalks clear of snow. It's really hard to stay on top of who's responsible for what. I learned that, as we, most of us probably know, um, adjacent business owners and residential property owners are responsible for clearing their sidewalks. But there was also a lot of discussion about these sort of no, no man's lands, um, of which there are quite a few. Like, uh, roundabouts and the crossings around roundabouts. Corners which might technically belong to a business, but, um, they don't realize it or don't know. So I don't have any particular findings to report from that, going to that. But it was, it was an eye-opening experience for me. I also learned about the ability that citizens have to, um, take complaints or to, to give complaints to, to the city about snow removal and, and code enforcement relating to snow removal. So, um, the next time there's a big snow, I'll, if my right of way to get somewhere is blocked by snow, probably be, um, using a, a web form to make a complaint about that.
Ashley?
Um, Ashley here. Uh, I haven't gone to anything recently because, as you know, I live in Portland. But I will be out next week because the Ben Park and Rec, uh, project that I've been working on that affects the, the three parks, Miller, McKay and Columbia. We've put together some design renderings and some different concepts. And this, um, and Ben Parker Rec has, uh, a survey online. I'm going to send it to Lisa after this. But there will be a, an in-person opportunity to come and look at the concepts and give feedback for it next Wednesday. Uh, there's a couple of different times, um, ten to twelve and then five to seven, um, on next Wednesday. But I will send you the, the virtual option for that where you can look at the renderings and then take the survey. And I would love it if all of you at COBAC did that. I think, uh, if you do look at it, uh, concept two on all of them is probably the most accessible. There is still a lot of work that needs to go into the design. This is just very initial design phase of things. Um, and then if you can, when you're taking the survey, uh, fill out the, uh, the extra comment space with very specific, uh, things that you see in there. If something doesn't look accessible or you have another idea on something, um, really anything, uh, positive, negative. Any feedback would be really great on that. Um, but yeah, I'll send it to Lisa and have her forward the link to everyone.
Great. And before I forget, I also went to the city council listening session for their two-year planning. And all of us probably got about two minutes to talk because there's a lot of people in the room. But I highlighted the fact that, um, what I stressed was that, you know, we do have access to the city council and people do listen to us, you know, like when something comes up, but we need people that we represent to know that we actually exist so they can come to us with problems so that we can direct them to the right place. Like I'd love to hear, to see tons of emails saying, hey, fix the sidewalks. This bridge sucks, you know, that kind of thing. So there's some things that they're working on that I hope were included on. I know for the neighborhood associations, they have a trailer that they're going to have, uh, neighborhood associations be able to rent out or to sign up for, to go to events. I'd like to go to events, especially, um, like, um, for races or any kind of neighborhood get-togethers to show that we exist so that people who we do represent know to reach out to us. Uh, we have about one minute left. I don't know if we need to approve extending for about five or 10 minutes or if we can just breeze through it. Okay. And council member update?
I, 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 it seems like you have been very well updated on what council's been up to. Yeah, it, that parking decision that happened and we've been working on goal setting. We had goal setting Monday and Tuesday. And I think we will next get back from staff what that work looks like written down on paper. We'll continue in working on goals until March when they're, um, finalized. And that's all going hand in hand with the budget. Budget comes up. Um, we've got to, um, finish budget by this summer. I think we vote on budget in June. We'll have budget meetings probably in May. So that's what's going on on city council.
Barb, can I ask a quick question? I apologize whoever I interrupted. This is just another really quick little, uh, transpo question. I was just looking at this thing and it says that the, with, oh, uh, electrical facilities requiring new multi-unit developments and certain to have enough capacity for electric vehicles. Is that like the same, like if, if they provide parking, they do. If they don't provide parking, they don't?
That's a really good question, Cory. I don't know the answer. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just, if they're required to do EV, I'll be pissed.
Please, if you want to write that question to me in an email.
Yeah.
Forward that and we'll get the answer. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else, any questions? I'd be happy. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
For, for attending our meeting. We appreciate your support and being here. Thank you.
Great. With that, uh, I motioned to adjourn and our next meeting is, looks like it's going to start at one o'clock. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Starts at one, it's from one to two thirty on February twenty-third. Meeting is thereby adjourned. Thank you, everybody. At one thirty-one.
Ooh, also, I'll be at the next one in person. Bye.